I will call to order the May 11th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening. First order of business is adoption of the agenda item 1.2. Advertite a motion?
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move right into item 2.1, Student Recognition for Winter and Spring Activities. We'll welcome, thank God, Mr. Think from Irondale to kick us off. Good evening. Welcome.
Oh, welcome.
Welcome.
We're glad to have you.
Oh, hello, everyone. I think we're the lone representatives tonight from Irondale, which is, that's all. So, we have our speech team, our Nordic boys, some must have melted, and they are not quite here yet, so I'm not quite sure where they're at. We have a couple of our drama students are going to join us virtually. They're actually still doing some drama kind of contest and shows, and they kind of continue almost into the early summer. And then we have a representative from our co-op gymnastics team that is going to talk about their first year of a co-op in gymnastics, how that went at the new practice facility, and her experience in the state tournament. So, welcome the students from Irondale.
Hi, so my name is Taylor.
And I'm Kohar.
And we're the captains of the speech team. I'm the senior captain, she's our junior captain. So, for our team this year, it was actually not as challenging as we thought it would be for it all to be on virtual.
We had already kind of digitalized by using Google Classroom, thanks to Taylor, because having a piece of paper on a board is not... There were some hiccups in past years, but using a Google spreadsheet and sharing that on Google Classroom made everything much easier, including this year especially, setting up Google meets for practices with coaches.
And we also learned that sometimes our internet was not the best, but most of the judges on our speech and stuff were really, really forgiving about that most of the time.
Yeah. One time I spent the entire hour just being repeatedly kicked out over and over of the Zoom meets, but I got two in the round, so overall, it went well. Our rookies have also done very well this year. There are four, I believe, yes, which is more than what I expected, to be honest.
We're very proud of how our team has like fared throughout this COVID season, and especially how our coaches have handled it, as well as how awesome as captains have adapted to only being able to see each other virtually.
Hi, I'm Julia. I'm with the Moundsview-Irondale gymnastics team. I'm from Irondale, and I'm going to be next year's captain. This year was kind of rough at the start, so we started off, the gyms were closed, no offseason training, so it was kind of shaky at the start. We got a new gym at Edgewood Middle School. It's a really nice facility, love it there, like we could practice at any event we want to, really spaced out, really nice. We started off on Zoom meetings because our season kept getting pushed back, we wanted to know each other, get to know each other on there, talk about like how the season's going to go. We were super COVID safe, we kept our masks on. We had like small numbers this year, so about like nine of us. We had four girls get hurt in the beginning of the season. Two of them were long-term, so they were out for the rest of the season, but they helped support us. And then we got better as a team as the season went on, and we kept improving and improving, and we got some injured people back. And then two of us went to the state competition. I was one of them, and then we have a freshman from Moundsview that also represented us there. And it was a great season overall, and we like, we were all really close on the team, and I liked the combination of the schools. It was really good to like get to know people from Moundsview and Irondale, and we all got along really well. We had a lot of younger kids, so we'll have a good like program, keep going in a few years, so yeah. Thank you.
Great, congratulations, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thanks so much, congrats to guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can hang around if you want, or...
No.
It's beautiful out there, none of us are going to see it, but... Well, we've moved item 2.2, Open Forum, and I believe there's nobody registered this evening to speak. Item 2.3, Announcements. Shawna, will you acknowledge the gifts?
Yeah, so there were 16 gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $5,697.40, and there were 23 gifts received for the Relfrider food shelf this period for a total of $77,951.56. It's recommended that the board accept the gifts and extend our thanks to the generous donors.
Thank you. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting dates, regular meeting of the board on June 22nd at 7:00 PM at the District Center. Move item 2.4, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Lennox.
Great, yeah, thank you, Jonathan. I do have a few things this evening. The first I wanted to start with is the governor's recent announcement relaxing COVID-19 restrictions. Getting a lot of questions about what does that mean for our schools. We did have a chance as superintendents to join a call with the Commissioner of Education. She was very clear on that call that schools are expected to continue to follow their safe learning plans through the rest of the school year. That said, there are a few adjustments for us as we move forward, and the first one is that for outdoor activities, they have now removed the masking requirement. So if you think things like recess, or if Fayed is going outside, those classes, masks are no longer required when they are outdoors. A second area they have us tuned into is that for any gatherings or public events that we may be happening that happen on or after Friday, May 28th, which is the Friday before Memorial Day, there will no longer be capacity limits for those events. So, we did, she did make sure that we know, there are face coverings though if you're indoors. Face coverings are still required for indoor events, but the limitations after that time for numbers change. We are constantly looking at our numbers and what events we have coming up. There's lots of things that happen this spring, but one I would raise to your attention is graduations. So we have been in touch with the University of Minnesota. Our graduations are scheduled to be at Mariucci about what that means for them and what capacities they may let us have, so it could be that we're able to have a few more folks attend graduations yet this spring because of that change. And then finally, after July 1st, the governor will end all the additional requirements, so that means that requirements for physical distancing and face coverings for students will also end. Students in summer programming, I wanted to make sure I highlight that because as we start our summer, that potentially is, you know, before July 1st and before those masking requirements would change, we're already setting up our classrooms to have the physical distancing built in, so that will be there regardless through the summer. But masking requirements after July 1st would no longer be mandatory. So, just so people understand that, for specific information, certainly I'm encouraging people to reach out to your schools and the summer school coordinators. They can give you all of the detail about their programs, the kids, and those expectations. Know that we will continue to stay in touch with the state, all of the health officials in terms of any changing guidance that we might get. The commissioner was clear on the call. She said, "This is as of today." I think the state reserves the right based on changing conditions to change guidance. So, we'll pivot if need be, but I just wanted to make sure people knew how that was starting to impact our schools the rest of this year and into the summer. A second area I wanted to highlight was some really great scholarship news. I'm pleased to report that a total of 101 students from across our secondary schools, Irondale, Moundsview, and the ALC, have received college or post-secondary scholarships. So, the total amount awarded was $118,000, and we want to take this opportunity to congratulate all of those recipients, and I'd also like to thank the donors for their generosity. That certainly is appreciated. And finally, I wanted to share that last week, Irondale and Moundsview High Schools both hosted mental health walks with the goal of supporting people with mental illness. They also wanted to raise awareness and end the stigma surrounding mental health issues. Participants in those events were invited to walk a short loop either around the building or at a nearby park, and then they gathered with other participants to enjoy some snacks and a chance to win prizes. Additionally, both high schools were awarded a grant from Alina Health for their Change to Chill program. This program includes training for staff, tailored communications for parents, funding for a chill zone, and a summer internship opportunity for a student at each of our high schools. The program will identify two students who will work as interns to create relaxing spaces for students to use if they need to chill out. So, Irondale and Moundsview were among only 23 schools in Minnesota and Western Wisconsin to receive this grant, so I just want to congratulate them and thank everybody who was involved in these events. That'll end my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. And we are going to jump around this evening. We have a couple of students beaming into us in this virtual world. Welcome, good evening. Glad you could join us. Try not to be the first people on mute this meeting.
Hi there. Yeah, we are here from Irondale Drama Department, and it's, this is, my name is Alec.
And I'm Sophia.
Yeah, we're just here to talk to you guys, you know, give you that inside scoop on Irondale Drama.
Excellent. Welcome.
So, I think we can mostly talk about the new theater, the new auditorium that was built recently, and about how awesome that is to be in there, and you know, the staffing and Janet, and all of the shows we've done, and you know, pretty much just how awesome it is to be part of the program.
And to be back at it.
Yeah, especially to be back at it with COVID restrictions and everything, and to be one of the few schools that's still able to do something is pretty outstanding.
Wonderful. We appreciate you taking a few minutes to jump in here. Can you tell us, how are you managing the COVID protocols, you know, in drama? Are you able to, can I do your art? How's that working?
Yeah, so we are following all of the COVID protocols that Moundsview has enacted, you know. We just finished up our musical for the year, and all of our actors and all of our performers were socially distanced throughout that show. All of the students were masked the entire time, and all of the audience was masked and socially distanced as well.
Yeah, that spot covers it.
Well, you guys were able to do a fall show as well, and tell us where you are tonight.
Sorry, could you say that one more time?
You were able to do a fall show as well, right, Alec?
Yes, we were. That was outside.
And tonight, you're already preparing for the recognition for that, correct?
Yes.
Can you explain more what that's about?
About our outside performance?
Yes.
So, our outside performance, and I think Sophia can talk about this a little bit more because she was in it, just like I was. We, because we were in that flex, flux space, and it wasn't quite clear about what we were able to do, we decided to move everything outside, so we moved our technical aspects outside and all of our performers outside, and yeah, Sophia, do you have anything else to add? What was it like?
Yeah, we set everything up outdoors in that little place over by the tennis courts, and it was wonderful. It was very peculiar. We had to do some problem solving, figure out mics, how everyone can be heard. The audience was just sitting all spaced out, but it overall was wonderful, even though it was a little different. Worked out very nicely.
Great.
Excellent. Well, thank you again for making some time. Have a great night. We appreciate the representation you have for our schools in our district.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of course.
Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck at showcase.
All right. We'll move to item 3.0, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Advertite a motion?
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. It'll take us to item 4.1, Final Construction Update. We'll welcome Mr. Apokowski, and I think we may have some others joining us. Good evening, good to see you all again.
Good evening.
You're going to miss these late-night meetings.
The late-night meetings never end for us either, so we're not just on your board, we're on a whole bunch of different boards in different ways, so... And I don't intend to go anywhere. Both as a parent, as your architects, so I don't know exactly what I'll be doing, but I'll help out in some way, whatever way I can, so...
Super.
Well, we'll introduce ourselves just in case for people at home that are watching. I'm Paul Apokowski with World Architects and Engineers.
I'm Tyler Erdl with World Architects and Engineers.
Gary Zipko with Carl Sanderson.
And tonight, we're going to do just a quick roundup of kind of the process that we went through to recap some of that, and then show you some wonderful pictures of the buildings, and then we've invited some guests to come talk about living in the space, so we'll let them speak at hand. So, as you know, this process started years ago with the referendum planning process. The task force was developed in 2016 and 17. They came up with district-wide goals, went through an extensive process to understand the facilities and the needs in your district, and finally came to you with a proposal for that referendum, which came to you in the spring of 2017, and then eventually you decided to go forward with, and that referendum passed, but it passed in November of that year, and the design work really began in earnest at that time. As you recall, we had a really robust user input process, so this diagram, which is a little hard to read on this screen, but involved hundreds and hundreds of people across the district, spending hours and hours of time collaborating with us on the design. And really what we did with each project was, we had a set of promises that you had made to the voters about what that building was going to get, and a budget obviously that we had to live in. We've done that successfully, been on budget the whole time. And then when we sat down with that group, we really kind of started with a clean slate and worked with them to figure out the best way to solve those issues at their school. And then obviously that went through a whole process. We also would like to thank the Facilities Committee, which is comprised of the administration and the district here, and they met sometimes weekly, mostly bi-weekly for this whole time to act as an oversight and help solve construction issues and design issues as we belong, so that process I think worked really well.
And part of that process was each group that Paul was alluding to was called a core planning group, and that was comprised of staff, community, some, sometimes we had students on those groups, parents, and administrators that worked together, as Paul suggested, to really take the promises of the referendum and work together as a team to come up with, kind of starting from that clean slate, what serves the each building, and lands all the pieces of the floor plan. And then we went and further tried to involve more users to gather more detailed inputs, such as where our light switch is going, where our outlets, the teaching walls, where should sinks, and what materials should be in the spaces. So, the process really tried to involve as many users as we possibly could.
And again, the projects were phased over, really three phases, but a couple of years' worth of design, and actually it became almost three years of construction in the whole thing. We're happy to report that things are done. Everything is functional. We of course have a few pieces to button up here and there, but by and large the place, all of the functions are restored. As soon as you can go back to full occupancy, they'll be ready for you. And then we were asked to prepare some reflections sort of on the process for you, so we, as we talked about, we really let each site decide what was best for them or the best way to solve the needs of their building. One of the things that I'm pretty proud of in this process is, I don't think when we started a few years back that anybody really understood what a 21st century classroom could look like in Moundsview schools, and I think when you go around the district and look, we can all be really proud of the, sort of the change that we've made, and of the functionality and flexibility that's been built into each one of those pieces. And while some of the additions aren't extensive, or renovations aren't extensive in each building, each building now has some examples of what that kind of a space can look like, and I'm hopeful that it's going to help them kind of push forward in different ways of thinking about education and how the building can interact with them.
And then, of course, like building through a pandemic, it's been the first experience for us, I'm sure for all of you as well, and I will just say that it was a, we had a silver lining in that, that of course with the empty schools, we were able to get in there and actually get some work done ahead of time, and I'll say to the district and to Chris Paquette and his staff and Mike Schwartz, I mean every, the second that you guys knew you weren't coming back, I think that next week we were into spaces that we knew we could get into and make the most of a bad situation, so it's been great, it's been a pleasure. We are on time and under budget, so just wanted to say that one last time, so thank you very much.
Well, I'm going to talk with me that weren't so great, but I think it just speaks to being resilient, and we're, Mike Schwartz, kind of principal on Spelstra, I'm wearing lots of hats, but if you can see that picture on the left, or my left, right, kind of where that black thing is, that's a 24-foot extension ladder, and that was the reign of summer of 19. So, things don't always go as they're planned. With that being said, our partners, shout out again to Chris Paquette, he's got some stuff going tonight, but Gary and Paul and their combined teams, it really was a success. And I can already tell you, being relatively active at MASSP, I know a lot of principals, and I can tell you, I've probably got 15 people saying, "Hey Schwartz, when can we come and see your places?" And I said, "Well, you're not coming yet, but when we get it figured out, you can come and visit us," just like I did, getting ready for this stuff here three, four years ago. So, it's exciting, and I think you're excited as well. The other piece is, the word was slurry, and I learn something every day, and these guys always talking acronyms, so I'd write them all down, and I'd go find people, or thank God for the Google. I'd have to Google all, like, what's a CMU wall? It's just a concrete wall, but these guys love to talk smart. And so, anyway, I learned a lot, but we had three different former or old fuel oil spots, tanks at Moundsview High School. We didn't know about one of them, and it actually sat right underneath where our power, our main power box was. So, once we moved that and moved some dirt, all of a sudden, we got pollution control out, we called it the devil dirt. Anyway, the reason the picture up there is on the right, if you see where that green tile is, right to the right of that is where that slurry was. So, we did work it out, we did make movement with it. So, I guess where I'm trying to go with this, were some bumps in the road, but it was a great team, and again, Chris Paquette worked day and night on this kind of stuff. I wish he was here. He doesn't like to do this kind of stuff, but he should because he worked his tail off on this. The other thing I just wanted to mention too is, we're getting ready to open up Irondale High School. Parking lot's done, and what's completely under construction? Long Lake Road. So, we got lots and lots of phone calls, and Mike, why are you doing construction on Long Lake Road? First of all, I don't own Long Lake Road, they can do construction whenever they want, so... But things like moving the buses up on the north side of the building, worked out with the neighbors in the city of New Brighton, again, a good partner that we worked with. But I think we're on the right track. I know we've been out a few times. If you do want to go, maybe more of a one-on-one tour, or a small group, I could definitely do that with you, and get into some other spaces that we haven't quite seen yet, but thank you, thank you to the voters for passing, and thanks for Chris's leadership on getting the right people on, and job well done, KAN, whoa, I appreciate it. Thanks. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, then we were just going to just hit some highlights of each of the projects across the district and kind of celebrate, I think, all the accomplishments that you were able to do. So, the first is Pike Lake Education Center, that got a two-classroom addition, and I think a great example here of trying to make something greater than the sum of its parts is, we had to connect those rooms to the building somehow, and we were able to create, I think, a really nice little flexible learning area outside those, and those actually are some of my favorite classrooms in the district that we did. They have that nice door that connects the two classrooms, I think it's going to create a lot of flexibility for you there.
And then we have Pine Wood, again, very similar scope to Pike Lake, adding two additional classrooms there, and again, we were able to create that flex space outside of that that connects to the existing classrooms. And one of the fun features here is the core group really wanted to maximize flexibility, so they actually have an operable wall that goes in between each classroom out to the flex space, so really maximizing that shared learning area to be able to push out into it and create further learning opportunities as well.
Island Lake, I think, is another project that turned out gorgeous. I love the colors in that project. It was a renovation of the media center area, an extension of classrooms, and the addition of a few new classrooms, as well as a new secure entry and a new office remodel up front, so I'm really, I think that building puts its best foot forward now, when people come into the building, it really is a welcoming place to be, and I'm super excited about the media self-learning commons and the possibilities of that in the building.
Bel Air was another project that had kind of a facelift to the front of the building, a new secure entry for that space, really controlling visitors as they come in, and then a large addition to the cafeteria with lots of natural light and lots of pops of color, which is great for that space, and then a classroom addition and renovated special education areas as well, so really touching a lot of the population there at Bel Air.
Also like to thank the city of New Brighton for working with us on that solution for the buses there, that really allowed you to separate traffic on-site, and I think has streamlined processes there quite a bit, so thank you to them for that. Valentine Hills, another classroom addition, we added a net of about five classrooms in that building, although some of them we got by reclaiming classrooms that had been chopped up, so we got to touch a few different areas in the building. You can see some great pictures of that. This one, because of the fact that it's a round building and the way we connected on, has really quite a bit of flex space, enough, actually they have several classes on the two different floors working in there, and I think that was a great bonus, as well as a really makeover of the cafeteria, so they got some additional space in the cafeteria, but also the addition of some daylight in there, which was much needed, and I think the users really enjoyed.
Then we have Sunnyside. Again, this space had a cafeteria that didn't have a lot of natural light coming into it, so we were able to work with the core group and really play up the idea of Sunnyside, and how we could incorporate color, light into all of the spaces, so really happy with how this project turned out, as you can see. As you can see, both in the cafeteria with sofas and colored glass as well leading into the classroom, addition of five classrooms there and some flex space, really playing up the color spectrum and introducing lots of pops of color into fun learning environments, both inside and outside of the classroom.
And Turtle Lake, which is actually one of the earlier projects to get done. A great addition. We, again, worked with the core group there to come up with this solution and it was determined to put the additions on different parts of the building to maximize the exposure so that different class levels would all get exposure to some new parts of the building. And again, that was the one that we really started with the theme of connecting into some of the old classrooms. So although we didn't renovate the old classrooms, we gave them some access to the new space directly from their room and again, help increase the flexibility in those rooms, as well as a new cafeteria, kitchen and expansion on that side too.
Another one of the first projects to kind of get done was the improvements at Hyview. And the two areas of main focus there were adding the secure vestibule entry into the main office space there. So getting a connection right out into the vestibule to allow visitors to come in and check in first. And then really, that site had a lot of congestion issues with buses and parents kind of mixing in the front of that building. So being able to separate that, to have parents have a drop-off loop right to the front door and then have a separate bus parking area has really increased the traffic and really simplified it at that site as well.
And Chipewa, got a great facelift. I don't know if I can speak friendly about that. It was my middle school, so it's a bunch. It needed an update. It looked the same as when I went there. So we think really the outside of that turned out gorgeous and we're really happy with that part of it. But really, the focus of that was to create a new secure entry and move the office up to the front of the building, which, again, I think has really enhanced the function of that office space and is working a lot better, as well as helping the building be a little bit more secure and get your staffing to work a little bit better. Of course, behind that, we also created that great student commons space. So now that building has some wonderful open space to let kids go out and explore their learning on their own a little bit. So another project we're really happy with.
And then we come to Edgewood. And Edgewood, as you know, is one of the three bigger projects. And the core group had a lot of good ideas in how to connect all of these additions and renovate the key areas within the building to maximize the work of the referendum. As you can see here, the beautiful pool that was added on, I think, has been one of the amazing pieces, not only through construction with KANW leading the charge there, but being able to see users use that space has been great. Wonderful gym there. The athletic entry into that space goes from the exterior and interior, kind of playing up the idea of edgewood and being on the edge of the woods there. And then introducing pops of fall colors that are throughout the space, but also into the educational areas. As you can see, one of the flex spaces there, looking out over the site. So a really beautiful project that we're proud of.
And on to the high school. So Irondale High School, as you know, got an addition of that commons in the front, which, again, was a solution that we had kind of contemplated prior to the referendum, but with the help of the core group, really leveraged that into a great space. We hadn't anticipated moving the coffee shop and the store up there. Those were all great additions to that space that really helped. Will have it come alive. And of course, the auditorium, if you haven't had a chance to be there, I got to go see the show last weekend and that was great. The color change lights on the side or two. And during the show, they were all red. I was a little disappointed, but they do actually change colors so they can make those part of the theatrical lighting. And of course, the new weight room and fitness room and the whole pool space, which I think is also a really unique fitness room because we had those bleachers in there and we're able to leverage them. Kind of this multi-level fitness room. And then some of the classroom and flex areas. So again, part of the goal of that was to help open up the hallways and reduce some congestion. I remember touring that before the referendum. A lot of reports of those corners being places where there's a lot of agitation. And we opened those up and we're hopeful that that will really help people feel more relaxed going through those hallways. And then again, examples of some nice open 21st century classrooms with some flexible learning areas and a chance to give teachers and students a different look at what a classroom can be and some of the things that they can do in there.
And then finally, we'll wrap up with Mountview High School. And I do want to give a shout out to this core group. Adding on to this high school was not easy. It's a very, you know, a very urban site for a high school in this area. And it wasn't easy to put on a four-station gym onto this building and also two separate classroom towers. So kudos to them for bearing with us and coming up with a solution that I think turned out great. As you can see, the commons got a facelift there that kind of opened up traffic into both the calls court and also into the auditorium, just helped with some wayfinding and visibility into those areas. As I mentioned, the beautiful four-station gym and the athletic commons that leads up to that. Turning the back gym into a fitness center that I think is great, bringing natural light into that space as well. And then the classroom additions and also taking pretty small classrooms that had great views out of them, but just needed a little bit more space. So being able to renovate those areas and come up with some more modern classrooms with operable walls and lots of flex opportunities at that site.
All right. And we'll be happy to take some questions for you, but I think first we'd like our guests to come up and talk a little bit about their experiences.
Hi. My name's Jessica Olson and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Turtle Lake Elementary. And on the screen, those are two photos taken in my classroom last, this was probably in December, I'm thinking, so before pandemic, so pre-mask wearing. And from these two photos, you can see my students loving the flexible space. My row of girls, they all took their chairs and put them up in the window. So very flexible, being able to move around. I have loved teaching in this space. It's just given a lot of flexibility for myself and the other teachers and the students. I would say definitely a perk is, at first I was a little nervous about the glass wall, but it has been very beneficial and great because whether I'm in my classroom or out in the common space, I'm able to watch over my students who are in the other space, kind of watch over, make sure they're getting their work done. And I would say a huge benefit is that our EL teachers and our SPED teachers are able to pull students from all of the classrooms and work together in the common space. So they still feel a part of the community and not like they're being taken out and away from the rest of the grade. So yes, we love the space and we're excited for some of these COVID restrictions to go away so we can continue to use the space as it's really meant to be. And yeah, we love it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richmond Twy, the associate principal at Edgewood Middle School. This is my first year at Edgewood in the district, but it was an exciting time to see the construction being done. And just working with our teachers and my principal, just hearing about, you know, how tight the space used to be and just the community aspect and how our students and families, even our teachers, when they walk through the new building, were proud. And just exciting to give them tours just to see what the new space is going to be. The new addition is really helpful. So there's several different aspects. When you look at the activities, the activity entrance, the new gym, which the kids love, and also our pool, it's really exciting compared to the pool that we had previously. We try to give opportunities to our students to utilize the pools, especially on Fridays for some students that do come in. There's more time, just the opportunity to use your space. Myself and Principal Rees were talking the other day. You know, obviously, this way was put in place pre-COVID, but it's a blessing that we have the space we have now because we don't know how, honestly, how we would be able to serve our students with the space we had before. Where we're using almost every inch of our school to make school possible this year. And I'm excited for next year when we can have full students in. Looking at safety, we added a second entrance into our school, which is helpful. Learning about last year, a lot of families during pickup and drop-offs, we had to trail all the way around. We just created a plan, our families to follow through just for safety aspects where families are to come into the circle and exit in a seamless manner. When you look at the academic side of things and the teaching and the learning, the new flex spaces in the village, we like to call it the village, just to give it a name and ownership to the four classes upstairs and the four classes downstairs, there was space that's their own, where teachers interchangeably use the whole space. Where they have the classrooms, you'll see, if you walk through, you'll see kids outside working. There's a lot of studio type space where kids are in. So our kids are taking full advantage of the space that they have. And it's awesome just for me to walk through that side and just see kids in the classrooms working. I chat with kids, what are you working on? Some kids already caught up, so they're doing extra work. I just want to say thank you to everybody. It's really awesome of the space that we have. Our staff love it, our students love it, and I'm sure our parents do. So thank you. And also thank you to KANWOL as well. So thank you.
I'll let anybody in here.
I'm Aaron Mulberg. I teach physical education at Mountview High School and then I'm also the head football coach. And like Mr. Twy said, I mean, thank you to you all for making this happen. It's amazing. I'm a former Mustang alum, have a ton of Mustang pride. And I was fortunate enough to be a part of the committee and I had no idea all the steps that it takes to, I figured it was a lot of work, but just the amount of medians and the amount of time that you all put in to make this a reality is incredible. Our space has been more than I could have imagined. It's been such a gift to our kids, to our staff. I'll start with my personal favorite room, which is our fitness room. You walk by that room and it just catches your eye. Just the design, I tell you what, as mentioned, the natural light, it does something to you. You got sunlight coming through and you're working out in there. And it's just, we used to be in kind of a shoebox and you never knew if it was 80 degrees outside or negative 20 and it was just kind of a little bit stale. And just the design of the room's amazing. The space, I teach our junior and senior strength and speed classes and it's comprised of a lot of athletes. And to be able to use that space and also have Diane Shaw have her DAP class in there and we're executing two different workouts, but we're all in there together. We talk about inclusivity and our kids getting to cross paths with maybe students they wouldn't always cross paths with. It's just, it's really cool to see that. And just the versatility that the room gives you for a variety of workouts that you can execute in the weight room has been just incredible. The accessibility of having the weight room and the four-station gym literally separated by a door. So we can do our speed work and literally just walk through the door and we're right in the, right in our fitness room. And to not have to waste much time transitioning, to have everything really tight together, I figured that would be a huge benefit when we were in the planning stages, but that has, that has been just an incredible ability to not waste time. Because, you know, right now, we have a lot of time the way our classes are designed. But next year, when we're hopefully back to normal and we're down to 50-minute classes, time is valuable. And we want those transitions to be quick in my classes. So to be able to have that and not waste much of it has been great. Having a track, an upper-level track. I was trying to figure out in my head, how is this going to play out when we got guys doing speed training and there's basketball practice going on? And is it going to be distracting? And it's amazing that you could have four different basketball teams practicing and our after-school group doing their speed training up on the track and there's no distraction. And we're able to stay focused and get our work done and they're able to execute their practices. So the combination of everything and then the two team rooms, which I kind of get lost in, everybody catches the eye of the four-station gym and the fitness center. But those two team rooms, to be able to host multiple classes during the school day, after-school for our athletic teams to be able to go in there. The divider, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I figured out it's a dry erase board, the divider. So you can draw and use the whole divider to draw things up as coaches. That's very valuable. So it's been amazing and it's fun to watch other teams. I mean, usually in that team room and after-school when schools come over to play, you know, a basketball or volleyball game, to see kids from other schools, and it didn't used to be this way, but they'll come in and they're like wide-eyed, looking around and seeing, wow, these guys, these guys got a pretty cool situation here. So thank you so much for everything you've done. Appreciate it.
Hello. I guess I'm flying solo tonight, but I can handle it. So I'm Ben Fuller. I'm a dean of students at Irondale. And just kind of echo what Aaron said. I've been a part of the process from the user group phase till now. And it's just an unbelievable amount of work that everybody has done to get us to this point. But Irondale is pretty much unrecognizable at this point. When you drive past it, to me, it's kind of a spectacle. It looks amazing, draws your attention big time. At night, it's even better when the night head is lit up and the school name is lit up. It's just a, for me, a big sense of pride. And I think for everybody in the community right now, that drives by there. So that resonates through to the hallways, though. You really can't be in a place at Irondale where you can't see some of this new construction has touched. The expanded hallways, the flex spaces, things that I didn't know we were doing, where we have glass walls in classrooms now. So when you're walking by, I mean, there's really not a place that you can stand in that building and not see where the new construction has touched. So that's been huge. I think with our new flex spaces, much like our elementary schools, we're starting to learn and plan and understand how those things can work best for the instructional side of things. Our new front commons area. But the real, I think, hidden benefit was that for this pandemic, those spaces have been invaluable. We use our new multipurpose space. You know, I use it in the fall for coaching. When we had team meetings, we could spread out and be socially distanced in there. But now it's also to the second of our third cafeterias. The front common area is where our cafeteria is. So we can get those kids spread out and not have them on top of each other at lunch. And so those spaces have really been invaluable in that process. So I think that they've already kind of paid off that we're able to do those things safely. But we're excited about getting them filled up at some point and learning how to use them in the non-pandemic time. And those things, you know, goes right through to, we also have a new fitness center. It's the awe of many of my coaching friends that I know and other people in the community that look at it and think, wow, you know, it's state-of-the-art. It's something to be proud of, something that our kids have already started taking pride in. We're going to be able to fit lots and lots of kids in there once we, once we get to go ahead on the restrictions. So that part of it's going to be beautiful. I think we've seen some pride from our students. That's very nice to see, you know. Not a whole lot of asking kids to pick up after themselves, you know, when they see something that's gorgeous and they want to be a part of it, they want to help keep it clean, you know. It's just been a source of pride for everybody. And I think the last thing too is the safety and security that we have with the new main, the main entrance has been huge. You know, I can just think in the past, you remember the old ramp that rode up into Irondale? So, you know, I have a student on my caseload that's in a wheelchair and she's very independent and she wants to wheel herself. And sometimes it takes her longer. If it's negative 10 out, she's wheeling herself up a long path. Now, it's much more accessible for everybody. She comes right in the front door and she can go right up the ramp. She can enter at multiple different places that got, you know, fixed because of this. So it's been wonderful. And again, Irondale's unrecognizable. Thanks to you guys for making that happen. And it's been a good journey for us.
Any questions for the collective? The last chance to ask questions on this full-day-year journey that we've been on together?
No questions, but just appreciation.
Absolutely.
I was on the facilities task force and involved in the boat yes campaign as well as the Irondale team. And I saw, I feel like I saw a sliver of the work that really went on. And I'm really appreciative to all those at the district level who coordinated it all, as well as our partners who were there at the facilities task force, beginning, answering questions and helping us understand all the information and data and really being creative with solutions. You know, we've heard it from all of you on Irondale design team to think that there really was no place for those other classrooms other than the building and the courtyard and destroy an entire section of the school to do it, you know. But you really thought outside the box and helped us really figure out the best solution to maximize it, like we've heard from our staff here. So thanks again to all of you for your partnership. So thanks again to all of you for your partnership. Thanks to the voters um, for their support and patience.
Well, and we've been fortunate enough to see several of the schools and it's just been great to see the transformation. Um, my daughter goes to Irondale and just to see it, um, it, it's been amazing. Um, so just thank you for all that you've done and your patience. And like Heidi said, the community um, for passing the, uh, the bond and the referendum, so.
I'd offer a few closing thoughts. Um, it was fun to hear Mr. Mulberg talk with the excitement for the space. And he and I, not to, not to date us, we lived through the last construction cycle. Um, as students in our buildings, um, didn't get to enjoy the finished product. So I'm glad that you're enjoying it today, glad that my kids are enjoying it. And it's fun to, to see that energy uh, twenty years later on this kind of multi-decade approach that we've taken. I heard a lot of, you know, the theme of flexibility. Um, you all sound like geniuses post pandemic. This idea of flexible space and, you know, what a gift that we've given to the community and to our students and to our educators. The ability not just to manage through this pandemic, but to think about the future of education and what our kids are gonna need and how we prepare them and create space that works, works for them. And we're seeing that operate in real time. I mean Heidi, I appreciated you flagging the Vote Yes group as well as Diane. I, I think it, it seems like a lifetime ago, but that, that group that rallied not only to bring our community together, and they continue to do that time and time again. But it also gave us the gift of Heidi and Jim and others who were really involved in that effort. And then, you know, said, I'm gonna get involved in the Facilities Committee, I'm gonna get involved in the Board. Um, so this is a continuum. Um, it's really kind of the story of who we are as a district and the culture and fabric of how we do this work together. Um, and then just a really quick nod, like I think we sometimes forget, especially in the midst of the pandemic, you know, the front end of this construction was pretty disruptive. And our students and staff and administrators all, it did the hard work of adapting and responding and, you know, working with our architects and our construction management team to make sure that we could accommodate the schedule. Um, and it's not lost on any of us that that was disruptive. I will tell you that we've had some faculty come back at us and say, you know, I, I long for the days of complaining about the, um, the construction that was happening in the midst of distance learning in the pandemic. Um, so just a, a nod to, you know, students and staff and those who've kind of managed through this. We thank the construction team, we can't thank you enough. Um, every single time you've been in front of this board, um, you know, on time and under budget has been the theme. Um, we've appreciated that as, you know, the financial stewards of this district, the financial stewards of our, our taxpayers. And then just one last nod to, to the people who made this all happen. Again, this community, time and time again, has stood up and said yes. Has said, yes, we're gonna invest in our facilities, yes, we're gonna invest in our students. Um, every single time we ask and it has never lost on any of us. So as, as we go into budget cycles, as we go into contract negotiations, as we go into every bit of the work, and we're gonna talk about the District Operational Plan later today. That is really top of mind for us as policymakers and fiduciary board members um, for this group. So just a heartfelt thank you to all of you. Fun to, to hear how the spaces work and I can't wait to continue to see it benefit each of you as, you know, educators and administrators, but as importantly, the rest of the community and our student population. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you all can hang out for the rest of the night. There's a little bit of sunlight left. And we'll carry on with everybody's favorite topic, item five point one, policy review. Like no, no takers? All right. Superintendent Lennox?
Super. Uh, well, thank you, Jonathan. And tonight, uh, we are bringing back the two hundred through four hundred series of the Board Governance Policies. Uh, this is for a second reading this evening. Uh, there are fifteen policies in this group. Board members had the opportunity to review all of them in work session. And then we also presented these for a first reading at the April thirteenth uh, School Board Meeting. Now as a reminder, there was only one recommendation for revision uh, in these policies, which was simply to change the monitoring dates uh, in Policy BG four oh one. The new dates would be May and then December, which align with the monitoring schedule for the other Board Governance Policies. Other than that, no additional recommendations for revisions in any of those policies. So tonight we are bringing this back for the second reading and are recommending the Board adopt Policy BG four oh one as revised.
Any questions for Superintendent Lennox? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the changes as revised.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into item five point two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one District Operational Plan, Superintendent Lennox.
Great. Thank you again, uh, Jonathan. You know, each year, um, as part of our district improvement process, we identify goals to be part of our district operational plan. Uh, this past year, uh, the goals came in three specific areas. They were our equity promise, reopening schools, and then construction. Throughout the course of the year, these goals really needed to be flexible um, as we responded to a variety of factors that were impacting our schools as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, now, last week at our work session, May sixth, we had a chance to spend considerable time with all of you as School Board Members, talking through each of these goal areas. Uh, we've also created a comprehensive written document that details all of the work that's been done uh, on each of these goals across all three of the priority areas. That's given to the Board for their review uh, as well. So tonight, rather than going back through each one of the goals in great detail, our intention is to simply provide a high level overview for the work that's been done uh, over the course of, of this school year. So to begin, uh, I'll start with the area of our equity promise. We have a few things that uh, wanna highlight here. The first, uh, the primary goal, or one of the primary goals, was to create a district equity committee. And I'm pleased to say that uh, this goal has been accomplished. Our committee is uh, up and running. It consists of nineteen community members, four student representatives, and five district staff. Meetings have been scheduled monthly. Uh, subgroups have now been formed. Uh, they are also meeting and we're excited about, not only about the work the committee's currently doing, but uh, what it will do as we continue into next school year. A second goal in this area was in the uh, area of curriculum. Specifically, it was for the addition of an African-American history course for our high school students. I'm happy to tell you that this goal has also been met. Uh, that course will be offered next year for all interested students at both of our high schools. And in addition, it will also fulfill a graduation requirement uh, for those students. A third highlight uh, is the work we were doing on policy. Uh, we've contracted with Dr. Lanice Block of Sancor Consulting uh, to complete a review of our uh, district policies as well as our regulations. Now that work is being done through an equity lens as she reviews those policies, she and her team. Uh, they're currently uh, being uh, reviewed and we will receive a report and recommendations yet this June. At that time, a School Board would have the opportunity to take a look at any recommended policy changes. And administration uh, will work with the Board in consultation to address any uh, adjustments to our regulations that we might want to make. So more to come on this uh, next month, but uh, as of June, that goal will also be uh, completed. So lots happening uh, with equity and in the area of our equity promise. But those were a few things I wanted to make sure we highlighted uh, this evening. So moving on to the area of reopening schools, uh, I have to tell you of all of our goals, this one really was the most dynamic. Uh, there were multiple times when, as a superintendent, I received an email or a text uh, asking us the evening before to be on a call the next morning. Uh, the Commissioner would usually come on and let us know what the Governor was going to do or say, changes that would be made later uh, that next day. Um, so there were a lot of people waiting, watching for press conferences and alerts to know what our next steps would be uh, in terms of our school and our models uh, of education for our students. Now I know at times that was tremendously frustrating. Uh, often we were put in a position to be reactive. Uh, we very much prefer being proactive. Uh, but uh, it could be challenging for our staff. We know it certainly was challenging for students and families as well. Uh, so knowing that, I wanted to highlight a few uh, accomplishments within this area. And first I really wanna start by highlighting our staff. All of this started more than a year ago, uh, when the Governor put all schools into distance learning, uh, end of last school year. At that time, our staff worked hard, uh, you know, create digital lessons, to create online instruction for all students at all levels. And really with only days to plan and, and prepare for the work that they were doing, it was a significant instructional change. Uh, we finished last year in distance learning, uh, but then almost immediately moved into what became a full summer of planning. Our teams uh, really were working on creating learning models for multiple scenarios. They had to create the in-person uh, learning models, a blended learning model, as well as distance learning. Uh, they really worked hard through the entire summer. Uh, as a district, uh, we formed a COVID response team whose purpose really evolved over the course of uh, the year as we moved forward. At its inception, it was really about addressing issues uh, as they arose. Um, and things uh, you know, like uh, making sure that we were able to adapt uh, our spaces and our instructional model to uh, the pivots that we were being asked to make. Our employees were truly amazing, uh, in their willingness and ability to adapt uh, to those conditions, to provide instruction as well as support uh, to our students as they needed it uh, throughout the, the course of the year. As you know, we had multiple learning model shifts, often unforeseen. And I just wanna extend my thanks to all of our employees, and that's really across all employee groups, uh, for their willingness to lean in and do what was needed to address the uh, changing guidance and expectations that were being provided to us uh, by the state. It's certainly a challenging year, but one in which I really feel like our staff rose to the occasion. Second, uh, I wanna thank our students, our parents and our families. This year, daily routines became anything but routine. Uh, we were constantly uh, receiving guidance from the state, requiring us to change. Uh, students, parents and families were clearly impacted every time we had to make one of those adjustments. And these evolving conditions were nothing short of disruptive. And the grace that was extended uh, by our families, uh, by our parents, by our students to us was greatly appreciated. We know these shifts in learning model uh, created many hardships. Some we may never really know everything uh, of the impacts that were happening. But throughout the school year, um, our families really rose to the occasion. Our students rose to the occasion and we're very, very proud of them. We wanna thank them uh, and want them to know how much we appreciate all they've done to partner with us through this incredibly challenging uh, year. And finally, I wanna recognize our health, safety and operations teams. It was these staff who've, who've really been on the front lines from day one. They really were directly responsible uh, for providing uh, a first line response to protect our students, staff and community. Their jobs have not been easy uh, by any stretch. Early on, it was the appropriation uh, and distribution of PPE, of hand sanitizer, cleaning supplies, creating all the protocols. Uh, as the year wore on, their role expanded, providing COVID testing, right, to our staff. Uh, we were required to do that onsite uh, every couple of weeks. Eventually, the focus changed again when vaccines became more available. So our protocols changed uh, for them in, in our schools. And at that point, the state uh, really started to change and encourage more students to be back in our schools uh, in person. So our Health, Safety and Operations Team were faced with uh, setting up classrooms that come, uh, compiled with uh, the physical distancing um, and other CDC requirements. So lots and lots of work that went into uh, what they were doing to make sure that we could return students uh, back to our schools. And it's these staff who often uh, were charged with having difficult conversations with students, families and staff as they ended up being uh, impacted by a positive COVID test. Maybe for their own child, uh, maybe as part of a close contact and having to explain all of the protocols that went into that. Certainly not an enviable job, uh, but one in which I believe these staff, again, more than rose to the occasion. Uh, they've been instrumental in allowing us to successfully navigate uh, all of the work we need to do this uh, this school year. So in conclusion, uh, I'm pleased to say that we've successfully uh, met this goal. It certainly hasn't been easy. Uh, many people have been working in partnership to get us where we are today. But now if you look at the calendar, we're literally days away from uh, completing uh, this, which I would consider to be one of the most challenging school years uh, I've been part of in, in my career. So thank you to all who've been part of that. And then finally, uh, in this year's doc was the area of construction. Uh, just earlier, we just had a chance to hear from a, a number of uh, amazing people, all involved in the construction project. Both those responsible as well as those who are benefiting from uh, these new spaces. Uh, as you're aware, multi-year efforts, uh, but I think uh, safe to say it's been a resounding success. The legacy of the spaces that uh, we've been able to create uh, will last years into the future. The intent of the original Facilities Task Force, uh, which was the group who originally recommended we move forward with this project, was to create appropriate space for all of our students. I, I think the project has more than delivered on that intent. Uh, and I wanna thank the original members of the Facilities Task Force. Uh, certainly, as was mentioned earlier, our community for their support of, of the construction bond. And all of the people, including our site planning teams who were a part of making these spaces a reality. Proud uh, to say that throughout the construction, we were able to stay on time and on budget. Uh, that just doesn't often happen when you have a project of the size uh, that we just completed over three years. So lots of people involved, lots of people to uh, be thanked. And uh, for all of us, the new space to truly be thankful for. So uh, happy to report this goal has also been met. And I'm really truly looking forward to next fall when we can invite the public into those spaces in a more formal way and celebrate with everyone um, in these beautiful, beautiful uh, new buildings that we have. So with that, I will end my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Lennox? All right, we'll move to item six point one, updates.
Can I just, I don't have a question, but I do just wanna underscore, I think, the gravity of the last year. It has been just really, you had mentioned just on the school reopening, just that in and of itself. But with all the work around equity and um, the construction, I mean, all three of those things were so significant that, I mean, I think in, in um, you know, as long as I can remember, as long as I've been on this board, for, for certain, this has been the most challenging um, for district leadership. So I just um, appreciate everything that you and your team have done and our staff to really get us um, through a really tough year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Sandra. Item six point one, updates. Uh, we'll start with AMSD and legislative. The, the clock is ticking down, Mr. Dunne.
Yes, it is. May seventeenth, the legislature's scheduled to adjourn. Um, I believe about three weeks ago I reported they weren't moving along too fast. And I'm happy to report again, they aren't moving along too fast, or sad to report that. Uh, school funding remains still a bit mysterious. Um, the Senate and the House are miles apart. Doesn't really look like they're gonna get to where they need to get to on the seventeenth. So most likely, um, we won't know our school not, funding numbers till June, maybe at the end of June. The state does have to go into shutdown if they don't have a budget passed by June thirtieth, and I don't believe that has happened in modern times. So um, that's where they have to be. Um, if you watch some of the hearings, it's kinda frustrating because um, you know, the framework is not there to get there right now, especially on the budget numbers. You know, on the great side though, um, you know, some federal dollars are being infused in the state budget that are substantial. There's a one point six billion dollar surplus. Uh, there's really no reason to not think that um, we will get an increase in state aid funding, but I don't think it's gonna be as generous as two and two as the last legislature. But um, you know, that's where we sit right now. Um, AMSD two, they also gave us a little report on something that uh, a lot of you tackled a few years ago, is uh, having the high schoolers come in later in the day. And they did some quantitative and qualitative research on that. And, you know, the great and qualitative research on that. And, you know, the great thing is the high school kids are sleeping about 43 minutes more a day. They are happier, healthier, their achievement is up, that type of thing. You know, if there's a downside, parents with kids in different, like junior high, elementary, and high school, this has been difficult for them because of the different time. But for those of you who studied this and recommended it, made the change in Mounds, you, it has been generally a positive for the kids. So that's great. So I guess, you know, we'll keep following the legislature and the Education Committee and see where they are going. But I wouldn't expect anything by next Monday, so.
Over/under on something for our next board meeting on June 22?
I don't have any idea. I've never seen them this far apart, this late in the game.
All right, we'll move to 916 in Ramsey County League. Mary Jo.
Okay, at 916, we had a pretty uneventful meeting. We got the graduation dates. We voted on a lot of recurring services that are going to start July 1. I wanted to remind you, if you have time on Friday, there's still time to register for the virtual decriminalizing mental illness. It's a partnership of Ramsey County with the city of Maplewood, and all of their first responders are going to be there and talk about how they're making changes to deescalate and decriminalize mental illness and emergency calls in the city. So the mayor will be there, the police chief, the fire chief, and others. So if you have time, it's virtual 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning.
Thanks, Mary Jo. Take us to item 7.1, School Board Member Reports. Does anyone have anything to share?
I do have an update from the Moundsy Schools Education Foundation. We have set a date, and we'd like you to save the date for our Rock the Schoolhouse event in the fall. It will be a little bit earlier than normal, Saturday, September 11. And we're looking ahead to plan with cautious optimism to have an in-person event. But based on space at venues and, and all those kinds of things that we're still working through as, as restrictions are changing, we actually are hoping to host two events, one event on that Saturday, September 11, and a luncheon the following week for folks who can't make it on an evening event. So just keep your ears open for more details to come up.
Super. Any other member reports?
I, I guess I, we're at that time of year where it's the end of the year. And I know, Irondale prom was last weekend, and Moundsy's prom is this weekend. Graduation's coming up at our schools, graduation parties, end of year celebrations. And just want to remind everyone to, to enjoy those, those special moments, but stay safe.
I, I got to enjoy the, I know a number of you got to enjoy the play at Irondale. And the, and the auditorium's just magnificent. And the kids did a great job with High School Musical. And it was just a lot of fun. I've got something with Pinewood PTA tomorrow. And just to note, it was Teacher Appreciation Week. And as we've noted here, it's been a challenging year for everybody. So thanks to our staff and our teachers. And I believe school nurse day is this week too, but I'm not 100% sure. So, you know, thank you to all those folks who are involved. And, you know, and a big thanks to Chris and the administration and our principals and our teachers and all our staff, because this has been a heck of a year. I think we'll all remember it. And, you know, I think there are just a lot brighter days ahead, so.
And we'll close this. I think, Sandra, you highlighted this. And Jim, this is the last time we'll meet as a board before commencement, so before a senior class that has been through the wringer. We talk about the habits of mind. Hopefully, we prepared them for, for these last couple of years.
Real life learning.
If not, it's been a crash course in grit and resilience and, you know, and all of the rest of them. And just a heartfelt congratulations to this outgoing class, to their parents, for all the support and help getting folks through this. Nobody signed up for this, but this, this group of young people has, has shown tremendous resiliency every step of the way. And I'm excited to see kind of the tail end of their time with us. Feel like it's opening up. You know, we've been saying there's a, a light at the end of the tunnel. That light got brighter last week. And as we head into those graduation parties and into the summer and into their futures, I think brighter days are ahead. So know that we're thinking about you. We are, we're rooting for you and looking forward to, to celebrate with you. Is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.